Like to call the Village of Somerset back to board meeting. It's Tuesday, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Roll call, roll call.
Caleb, Caleb, Gary.
Joshua.
Kristi.
Myself, Mike Kepers.
Christopher.
Frank Earl.
And then on Zoom, Donnie Currie. Then, but it says like, what do you know? I believe in the flag. We live in public, which stands one nation under God, the invisible liberty and justice for all. Public comment on agenda items, forty-two minutes for person. If you have anything to say, say it now during public comment. Go, Michael.
Michael Lervy, One Twenty Depot Street, Village at Large. I wanted to address the Market Fest. It. I lived in White Bear for seven years, White Bear Lake in seven years. They had a Market Fest, saw how I grew, saw what a positive impact a pedestrian only traffic thing had for the businesses and the businesses that it drew. Wanted just to mention the board that it's something that I feel it's a good year to get started with the bridge being closed. And but it's going to be fluid. It's probably not going to be the same as it starts out. Like the village, just to kind of monitor, we can buy regular updates. But, you know, if we see problems, we can address it. If we see opportunities, we can address that. I felt we have a unique location, particularly now that we have the availability of the area by the library between the tattoo parlor and Sportsman. And I believe it can easily overflow into this area across from the hall. Probably try to avoid the area where we're going to do the pork chop, just because that will be pedestrian traffic, press crossing by, which is still going to remain busy. So I just want to actually challenge any board members, if you'd like, pick a Thursday, we can meet here. Make a road trip, go to White Bear Lake, check out their Market Fest, so you can see what, how they run theirs and what it has grown into. So I'm thinking maybe next Thursday, Chris. Brandon, Caleb, just because of parking, we all like, just, you know, gang up, maybe grab my treat, big giant Denali and head out there. I think it's one of those things that's easier for you guys to see than for me to try and describe it. And important, I think, for the village board to see. So she can help guide us. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
We need to redress what we talked about in the discussion.
It's a separate board meeting.
All right. Thank you. Sherry, my happy place, two fifty-two Main Street. Local businesses and bars got together to discuss the Market Fest and how we can work together to make it happen and benefit all of our local businesses on Main Street. Our intention is to keep it at the empty parking lot right between Sportsman and the desert tattoo shop. All three of the local current businesses that carry liquor licenses on Main Street will be able to serve liquor from their establishments, also from their patios. We would have an option for open carry across the street, but not to be able to carry on to another premises. We will not be closing the road for traffic this year and can evaluate that again next year as needed. And anything I missed? Insurance, we are looking into to see if there's any type of rider that we would need to establish. And also, we will be putting pork potties in over by Desert Rose Tattoo in the corner there to accommodate that as well. I think of everything. I don't think we need to do more. Thank you.
Any other public comment? No one wants, one twice. Public comment is closed. Discussion possible approval, temporary class B beer wine. Retailers license for the food pantry, not doing that, so we can move right on, right on for this one. Discussion possible approval, request for open containers during Somerset Community Market Fest. And myself and Caleb, going around the Somerset United Boards, or we are going to our discussion and we will not be voting on. You guys went through this line of rest of the city.
Yes.
Yeah, you have, did you have any?
Sorry.
Did you have anything to share from the meeting or what was, what was?
It was recommended some approval and the, let's see here, two hundred blocks of spring, two hundred block of main and three hundred blocks of spring during pizza days. And we have certain hours, June tenth would be nine A M. to six P M. Four P M. that I stop serving. And during Market Fest, I have four to ten, stop serving at eight, and that would be every Thursday. Let's see here, and then we have some details. I did believe we discussed wristbands. And also, we're going to limit parking on the two hundred block of spring. Main, thank you. Just for visibility, for walking purposes. Anything else?
And the business owners are going to be joining us again next month for public safety meeting, just the order of things went and what we can change and need to be and all that stuff.
They were for it.
Um, I did have some concerns before the meeting, as far as seems like a lot of those are taken care of. I like the wristbands. That's a good idea. The one thing I still have a little bit concerned about is the street project. It's going to be right here, right? So the curbs are going to be, or the sign, you're talking for the signs are going to be for when the construction happens. Because there'll be construction right downtown, curbs being replaced right downtown.
Do we know when that's happening?
I think we're going to possibly vote on getting that out for bid today. That's one of these. So if we get it out for bid.
They're not the bad word.
I mean, if we award it, I'm sorry. If we award the bid, what are we thinking about?
We'd have to figure that out with the contractor.
Of how long they'd be working that specific section.
I can avoid days. Work it through our contractor.
Okay, that wouldn't be an issue for them to avoid. And we could have signed up, but we just have to have appropriate signage for whatever the construction is on the curbs. Yeah.
They probably have them anyway, right? If you're working on it.
Should. Anybody want to make motion?
Josh Act has like to make the motion for the request for open containers during Somerset Community Fest with the two hundred block of Main Street, two hundred block of Spring Street and three hundred block of Spring Street for pizza days. This will be June tenth from nine A M. to six P M. And normal time for Market Fest would be Thursdays from four P M. until ten P M.
For a second.
Kristi, back. I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Are you not in all the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. And Caleb and I abstain.
I vote aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Donnie.
Number five, we've already gone over a location of Marcus Fest. It's this year being two thirty-five Main Street, number six.
Do you want to just approve that? No, we really didn't. We approved that you're allowing that. That's our recommendation.
Judge, anybody's motion to approve the Market Fest location to be two thirty-five Main Street.
Donnie Currie.
Discussion. Are you not in all the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose. And then Caleb and I will understand. Point three, street improvements project award.
Good evening. So I guess I can jump right in this. Can I share my screen? Let me know, Andrea, what I can.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So as a reminder, the two thousand twenty-three street improvements includes proposal A, which is sidewalk and curb replacement on Main Street here and Spring Street as well. Proposal A. Alternate one is the removal of the island near the cemetery. Then you have proposal B, which is the right turn lane. And then proposal B, alternate one, which is additional milling in and around the intersection there, okay? And we set it up so you can do a combination of either A or B or both. Okay? And at this point, what we're recommending is that you award the project all four of them, proposal A plus proposal A, alternate one, proposal B plus proposal B, alternate one for a total dollar amount of eight ninety-five, two ninety-five point five five. So entered in ninety-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-five cents. So with that being said, we have reviewed the bids with the contractor in detail and you know, if the project is awarded, you know, there is, there was some, a little bit of confusion on their part, and there will be a change order that will reduce the cost from this. Case in point, there's a couple items. If you look at proposal B, there are some marking removals here total, you know, around sixteen thousand dollars. Those won't be necessary if you award the alternate. Because, you know, we won't, those items are kind of covered in here. So that the dollar model will actually be lower when it comes to that. And alongside, there was a little bit of confusion on the contractor's part regarding the island removal. Right now, they have a significant amount of dollars. They didn't quite understand or whatever, but we already talked to them, and at this point, they said that, yeah, this number is wrong and that the more realistic number is in sixty-eight thousand dollar range. We've had discussions with Bob and Bob can pipe in on here, but more likely that we can do that lower by just pulling all that electrical out. But so they, the number for, for this is not going to be eighty-four thousand. It's going to be closer to sixty-eight or closer to our sixty thousand dollars as as it was currently estimated at the time of bidding. So I don't know, Bob, if you have anything you want to add to my commentary there?
Has any questions?
Well, so Bob, I have been out looking around at some of our other islands we have out there. Um, I noticed that some of them are a little chipped up, some of them are a little roughed up, obviously, from they're hard to avoid with the plow and there's snow on the ground, and then there's no grass going through the rock. So this is a long way of me asking, what, what does it take to maintain one of those, you know, that's it's quite a bit of work to make sure that you have. Doug, can you go back to your map and explain which is proposal A? And then I think I understand proposal A, alternate one is the taking out of the island. What's, what's proposal A for spring and main? That's about the turn lane?
So, yes, so you have proposal A, which is select sidewalk and, and curb and gutter remove on main and spring here, and then proposal A, one, alternate one, is the island. And then proposal B is the right turn lane. And then proposal B, one, alternate one, is some additional milling and repaving and striping of the intersection, which it's all pretty rough and pretty necessary, we feel, so. It looks like proposal B, one, alternate is more marking rather than milling. They just got a little bit of milling in there, about five thousand. Excuse me, about six thousand dollars in milling. I'm sorry, fourteen thousand in milling. The rest of it is putting in concrete, right? It's so here's the alternate for B one. And you can see there's it's kind of, it's asphalt pavement, it's pavement, it's with two minutes pavement, they just call it asphalt. Asphalt concrete pavement.
Okay, explain this to me, Chuck, then. Proposal B one, what exactly does that do? For the seventy-five thousand dollars?
Well, and some of it is overlap. Let's go see if there's a better map in the plans for you. Bear with me. I'll get there. So you can see for proposal B, here's the removals. And then here's the plan for proposal B.
So that is for the turn lane?
Also be.
Be, what's being that?
Would be, does all that striping come with that? Doc, all the striping that was showing, I'm trying to use that come with that?
Yes, and then so to some extent, I mean, you have, so there's probably thirty thousand dollars worth of striping and everything else that would be removed from proposal B and as part of proposal B one, because you can see with the B one, you're, you're taking the pavement back, you know, past the rendezvous here and extending it up, you know, quite a bit further on the northern leg. And then you're bringing it all back to the, to the bridge here and milling and overlaying and, you know, and redoing all of this in addition to, you know, to the south here. You know, this portion down here. So this is B two, which, you know, just basically, we're going in there and we're doing all this cutting and patching and concrete removal, you know, to make everything look nice and, you know, to lend itself to the long, you know, not only to the longevity of the improvements, but also to make it look nice for this, you know, this main intersection, you know, you're going to have this bridge rehabbed and everything to the south there is just to kind of clean everything up, you know, get everything programmed so you're not coming back in five, five years and all of a sudden milling and overlaying the intersection that you just, you know, put the effort in to put the turn lane in. So it's just to kind of clean everything up and then so you have a longer life and, and can extend the need to having to do anything in and around this intersection for, you know, fifteen, twenty years.
All right, so let's pretend I'm five, because I'm still confused here. So because you said there's, there's B, there's B one, and then you just said a B two, I'm guessing you meant B alternate one?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
The regular B is the full of what you're showing on the map there and that's.
This is B one. Is all of this extra. Alternate one. This is all the extra stuff.
So why is it half the price of regular B?
You. On lane B one is making it a nice smooth surface instead of patching what has been cut up to make this turn. And it's going from rendezvous to the bridge and then on to Spring Street both ways.
So that bridge, that road would be touched there if it was, if we had to be one altered. So, yeah, all right, it sort of makes sense. So B is the actual turn lane and B one is all the improvements after the turn lane.
Correct. So, yeah, so here's B, like, you can see where we, we modify, we, we take out, we take out what's there now. We put this new sidewalk and, and curb and gutter in, we put this island in, we do all the lighting. We re-stripe these legs. And then we cut and patched the pavement here and here, okay? So that, that's necessary. You need to do both. I mean, you could do, you can do B without the alternate one, but you got to, if you do alternate one, you got to do B as well.
And do you think they could have this done by?
We don't know their schedule, but it's, the intent is to have it done by, you know, the same time the bridge is done, like school started.
Make a motion to approve proposal B and proposal B, alternate one. For a second.
Well, are we also talking about proposal A?
We can, but I have a motion for B is right now, if that's what we're talking about.
I'll say. If I can jump in, you know, I, you know, the intent of the project originally was to do both alternate A and both alternate B. Uh, you know, with, excuse me, proposal A and proposal B. And so I would, I would suggest that any motion include alternate A with alternate, excuse me.
I definitely want to hit them separately.
You want to hit them separately?
Yeah, I'm definitely not for.
Because it is.
Thousands to take out that island.
Okay, so, so in my mind, if you want to do it separately, you could do that, but it's a proposal A with alternate A one, proposal B with alternate B.
That's what we're talking about now. There's a motion and a second on the floor for proposal B and proposal B, alternate one. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Sorry, I am for it. Motion carries. Now we can discuss proposal A, the Spring Street, the Main Street project. Can you pull your screen up to the, to that again?
And I could show you more of the detail if you like, but if, you know, it's, if the overview is fine, I'll just stick with that.
So this is redoing the sidewalk and curb and gutter on Spring Street and that part of Main Street that heads west.
So, yeah, so you can see, I just thought I would take liberty here, Francis Street, you can see what's sections in the plan that are being removed and replaced. Uh, you know, from Francis down to you know, in and around the corner, down to Revard, so that.
Still, are there still bump outs? Are they going to be taken on? It looked like on that last picture, there was a couple bump outs still there.
Removed and replaced.
Bro. Nothing's changing the form, Chuck. It's just redoing what exists.
Yeah, getting rid of the bad stuff, per se. You know, it's always a judgment call when, you know, where to start, you know, when to, where to start, when to stop. And, you know, so quantity, and that's why we do a unit bid on these things. So in the field, you know, we'll mark out, we, you know, we went through it with fine detail with staff before. You know, when we actually get out there, we'll, we'll do it again to make sure that, you know, you know, so they might, might be tweaked a little bit one way or the other, but we, we tried to err on the side of more rather than less, because you know, it's, these, these projects are difficult. It's because they're based on judgment and people have differing opinions about what should be replaced and what shouldn't.
Chuck, just for the two proposal A, alternate one. Even though I'm going to speak against it, can you pull it up for us?
Sure. And so here it is in a nutshell. You have the island, you have the light removals. And then, you know, basically the pavement leading up and, and in and around through that. So, and then you can see the replacement would be to strike a bit. So what you would have is a through lane and then a dedicated left turn lane heading, heading to the south there, much like you have on the opposite side where you have a dedicated left turn lane to the amphitheater.
I would like to make a motion to for proposal A on spring and Main Street, treating the curbs by Tri-City Contractors in the amount of five hundred seventy-three dollars. Seventy-three thousand dollars, seventy dollars and eighty cents. And at this point, skip proposal A, alternate one of taking out that island. Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Yes. I, I'd like to speak on that, because I seconded a motion based on some other stuff that is, is coming up, and I just think that maybe at this point in time, I just don't want us to overextend ourselves with the cost of that. If there was a significant reduction in that, I'd be willing to entertain looking at it, but right now, being even at sixty thousand dollars, I think we need to look at some other things that are coming down the pipe that we're looking at engineering first.
Any other discussion? Yeah, um, I think long term, it would probably be cheaper to remove this. Just because we don't have to maintain it, it'll be easier to plow around. It does make that turn a little easier. The other the other thing is, is with everyone, with the contractors actually being in here and actually having everything shut down, it's a good opportunity to actually do this. We may not get another chance to do this again, and whatever is in that center island is going to get hit. And whether we put a tree, post, a sign, whatever we put there is going to get hit. But I just think that removing it is still the right decision. I, I agree. It is, it is quite spendy, but I think it's only going to get more expensive if we do it down the road. Roll call vote, Caleb.
Aye.
Donnie.
Aye.
Josh Act.
Aye.
Chris Dubach.
Aye.
Myself, yes.
Aye.
Right, come on, Nate. Here is discussion, possible approval, street use permit, Christ Lutheran Church. We're doing a run in the color blast. We're on the very pizza days from four P M. to six P M. And what would you like to speak on?
Just number one, I appreciate you getting me on the agenda for this. Came up quicker than we. There's so many things going on right now. Yeah, I, it's a fundraising event. Is organizing a mission group trip out to Giff, Montana to work with Habitat for Humanity. Coordinated this with the organizers of Pizza Days, and they were all for it. They didn't have a race. They have a race on Thursday evening with the track club, but there was nothing going on during the actual weekend. So they, they saw this as a great opportunity to add a little more, you know, color.
What is that? What is, what is the color?
Colors, yeah.
Blast. Was that, is that where they like throw all the paint?
Well, it's not paint. It's, it's, it's a pigment. It's not even really a pigment. It's a colored dust made out of corn. Or score and search, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the street use permit for the Christ Lutheran Church or Pizza Days. It will be on discussion.
Do you have plans to barricade or assist with traffic detail for tire i since that's one of our.
Do you have plans to barricade or assist with traffic detail for kind of our eyes, since that's one of our major areas into our village? For this rate? Or did I miss it, so?
I briefly saw it, so I believe it's all kind of a interior type of. Run that includes the sunshine and the theater.
Right, there is, there is exposure on I from uh. Um, as we head down the park down Francis, um, and then head down I to the, the furthest gate. I just can't figure out another way to get ourselves off the streets. So we would have cones, we would place cones, I'm not, and, and pretty much be on the shoulder, um. And I don't know if we can, if we can limit. Parking. Down I on one side of the road or not, that might help, um, keep us off the roadways.
Any other discussion?
Paul, uh, did you guys have one of them uh, uh, runs, color runs a few years back, uh, in that same uh? Pathway?
Yes, we did.
How did that, how, how did that work out for you?
Well, that worked out fine, and there was no real traffic issues then, I know things are a little different now because. That is an alternate route around, so traffic is. Um, having it run down I a little bit, so.
Thank you, any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
I'm going to.
Okay. Chris and Donnie are going to abstain for part of the. So, so, thank you guys for that.
Uh, before the motion to adjourn, did we award, uh, which contract we're going with for the, um. Proposal B.
Proposal B.
B one, I didn't.
For both, B and B alternate one is Tri-City. Contractors and the amount of. Uh, the first one is the new amount of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty cents. Proposal B alternate one is an amount of seventy-five thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Would you like a motion amended, or no?
I have a question. Back to the uh, um, the special call meeting for, uh, you know, putting Christ Lutheran on the uh, agenda, are they? Being uh, assessed the uh, the fee uh, for a special meeting. Um, uh, for this uh, uh, to get this uh, approved, uh, because.
I would say no, Donnie, because we are having a special meeting and as long as they guide it in twenty-four hours. Uh, to get it on the agenda, which they did, I would like to see them not get charged.
So Andrea, is that, that true that they would not be assessed?
That's up to you guys.
Because you need a motion to that effect, I, I'd like to wave, uh, the, I'd like to make a motion, uh. But I suppose I shouldn't.
I'll make a motion, Donnie, I, I'll make a motion to approve not charging them the late fee for a special meeting. Um, because we are already having a special meeting and they did get it in within the twenty-four hours, so. Question, all in favor?
I.
I opposed. Two extensions. Alright, thank you.
Just, just be, just so I'm clear, um, so you did all proposal A. Plus proposal B. Plus proposal B one. For a total of eight hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents.
Yeah.
Is that right, Donnie?
But it'd be a reduction in. That, now, had I heard, so I'm kind of waiting for the numbers to come back, uh, because uh, uh, Chuck had said there might be some, uh, some, uh, uh. Change orders for a reduction under the proposal B one alternate, right?
No, because we aren't, since the, it's still going to be there now. Yeah. Yeah, so the thirty thousand dollar savings. Or B one.
The, the eight hundred, the eight hundred and ten thousand is the bid, that's what you have to award. But it is a unit price bid, so it will come down, Donnie, with those things that aren't, won't be paid.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification, Chuck.
I'm gonna get my calculator, I'll just make sure, does it?
You have to award it as it's on there, and then they'll do a change order. So you do the amount that's. On the, on the bid. And then there will be change orders for anything that. Get changed.
So if you, that's five seventy-three, oh, seven, zero point eight zero, and if you add, uh. Uh, that. In addition to one sixty-two, four, four, two point four zero, plus seventy-five, two, four, five point three five, comes up to Chuck's number.
Alright Chuck, can you say that number one more time, eight hundred and ten thousand?
Seven thirty-eight and fifty. Five cents.
Alright, and your last one was fifteen cents? Fifty-five, fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Perfect. Thank you, motion to adjourn.
So.
All in favor?
I.
Oppose. Meeting.
Everyone.
Six thirty-six PM.